And justice for all.
Let us pray. Father, we pray for our nation today, and we pray for unity, we pray for peace, and we pray for healing. And we pray, God, that you would be with us today as we make important decisions to benefit the citizens of Sota County. And, God, I pray that you would continue to bless America. We ask it all in Jesus' name. Everybody say.
Amen.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Brian.
Okay, I'd like to welcome everybody to the September 24th Commissioners, Board of County Commissioners, Sota County meeting. And could we hear a motion to approve the minutes of September 22nd? And yeah, we'll start with that one.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Mr. Crabtree?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
All right, I'm sorry. I'll have to abstain. Sorry about that.
In the matter of approving the minutes of September 17th, 2020?
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second?
I will actually need to vacate the chair to second that motion.
All right.
Because I don't believe you is here for that.
That's right.
Sorry for the confusion, folks. We need to make sure we do this in order. So I will vacate the chair to second the motion of the approval of the minutes of September 17th.
Mr. Crabtree?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Abstain.
In the matter of request for appropriation of funds?
Are there any questions or comments in regards to item two on the agenda? Hearing none?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Crabtree?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
In the matter of notification from the Ohio Public Defender regarding indigent defense reimbursement?
Are there any questions or comments in regards to item three? Hearing none?
Motion to accept.
No second?
Mr. Crabtree?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
In the matter of request for appropriation transfer of funds?
Are there any questions or comments in regards to item four on the agenda? Hearing none?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Crabtree?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
In the matter of resolution authorizing Darren Lebrun, PEPs, Sota County engineer, to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Commission's state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs and to execute contracts as required regarding the 2021 Sota County Township Highway Improvement Projects?
Are there any questions or comments in regards to the engineer's request for the OPWC authorization? Hearing none?
Motion to approve.
A second?
Mr. Crabtree?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
In the matter of environmental review record capital fund program 2020 for Portsmouth Metropolitan Housing Authority, grant number OH-12PO-1050120.
Any questions or comments in regards to item six? Hearing none?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Crabtree?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
In the matter of approving payment for the regular scheduled accounts for the various funds, moral obligations, and the then announced certificates in a total amount of $97,182.46?
Any questions or comments in regards to item seven? Hearing none?
Motion to approve.
A second?
Mr. Crabtree?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
In the matter of accepting miscellaneous reports?
Any questions or comments in regards to miscellaneous reports? Hearing none?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Crabtree?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
In the matter of request for fund transfers?
Any questions or comments in regards to item nine? Hearing none?
Motion to approve.
A second?
Mr. Crabtree?
Aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
In the matter of letter of support regarding Women's Business Center Small Business Administration Grant?
On this one, before we vote on this, I'm sorry for the late ad on this. This came through literally yesterday afternoon from Brooker and Eckler. And there is a grant application from Shawnee State University to create a Women's Business Center. I'm sure that the notes were in the packet that you looked at this morning individually, but it's a good thing. It really is. It'll help them with women entrepreneurs and others that are trying to create new businesses. And this literally came at the last minute yesterday evening, and I sent it over, and I thank our clerk for getting on it so quick. But the grant application is due today. So they need our letter of support to move forward, and I think it's a really great thing on that. Robert, would you?
Yeah, we received it also, the Economic Development Department. We've just been swamped. I had gotten my letter.
Okay.
I just wanted, you know, we also support that.
Okay. Yeah, we appreciate Commissioner Schmick actually helping with that. I think she, is she in Union County, I believe it is?
You're doing that letter this morning?
It's already done.
It's done. It's in the meeting. That's what we're getting ready to vote on. So we're just, we created the letter.
If you could make note, our department's behind it also.
Okay. Dr. Bauer, yeah. And we're sorry for the quick action on this. This happens every once in a while. We'll get a request at the last minute, and we have to move on it. But it is a very good thing, and I apologize for not having a lot of time to review it.
I read the email.
Okay, you got the, yeah.
I got the email.
So that's good. And, okay, we get a motion to?
I will make a motion to approve.
Second.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Crabtree?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye. And let's hope they get their grant. That'd be great. That would be wonderful. Okay. And I would like to, if I could, just real quickly, and I want to add something here. I know that there's a lot of questions sometimes about how the commissioners discuss topics and things like that. One of the things that we do, and I know City Council has this as well, we review the meeting, this stack of paperwork. A lot of this is statute-driven. A lot of this is stuff that it's appropriation, things like that. We individually, we review these, okay, with the clerk to go over exactly what is happening, what is being asked for, what is being discussed. And we do that individually, all right? And I know that there's some people that think that there's giant behind-the-scenes meetings and things like that that are going on. That's not the case. These things are discussed. We review, we discuss with our clerk, and we review the requests. A lot of it is appropriation-driven. A lot of it is statute-driven. A lot of it is request, grant request, letters of support, economic development. A lot of this stuff comes our way, and it's a little bit different than the city, where the city is actually legislating. They're actually creating law. They're actually doing those things. We are very much creatures of habit. And I know when I first became a commissioner and working with Mike and Doug, they really, you guys really pounded that in my head, that ORC, 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 and that's it. That's the rules. We don't change them. It is what it is. We are very much creatures of habit, creatures of statute, actually. And we have to abide by the Higher Rights Code. So a lot of what we do is very much a Higher Rights Code-driven. So I think it's good for everybody to understand exactly, you know, that the commissioners, we decide individually how we feel, and we don't always agree. You know, we've had some, you know, times where we didn't agree, and it just, it just, you know, it's not always, it's not always good. And you're not always going to have agreement. You're not. But...
But we can agree to disagree.
We can agree to disagree, and we get...
And we have three of us, so that way?
Yes, we do. So it's a little bit tougher when you have such a small forum, actually. I mean, we do have a small group. And, but it's very much, we work very well together. And I think the, because we work well together, and because we oftentimes have the same opinion on a lot of things, we are very streamlined. We are very productive. We keep the ball moving very well. From a business sense, the county is doing very well. And I think there's an argument to be made, too, that whenever you do agree, and you can do productive things together, that that's a plus, too. So I think, I just wanted to say that today. I think it's something that everybody needs to understand. And I also do not believe that the public wants to see infighting, that they want to see arguing, that they want to see the government entities fighting amongst themselves. That is not something they want to see. They want to see productivity. They want to see positive. They want to see things moving forward. And that is something that we strive to do. We want to move things forward. So with that, would you have anything that you would like to?
None at this time.
Okay. And Mr. Crabtree? All right. Okay. Gentlemen, gentle men, Will and Patrick, what we got?
I have two questions on agenda, and unfortunately, I've got a whole bunch off agenda. On agenda, you have a meeting coming up at 12:00 noon with Lawrence, Sota Solid Waste District?
Yes.
Zoom meeting. Do you anticipate anything concrete being accomplished today through that meeting? I guess I'll just be blunt, or is it going to be a rehash kind of of what's been going back and forth? Has there been any movement made towards, you know, hiring a permanent, full-time director for that position?
That is what we will be discussing today, exactly the path forward we want to take. We do want to see an enforcement officer hired. There has been an opinion, a difference in opinion, and I will tell you, Sota County feels strongly that we have not received good representation in our courts in years past. There have been some circumstances that have led to that, and those are personal in nature with personnel, and I'm not going to rehash that. But we feel strongly that the taxpayers of Sota County deserve better. And if it takes us a little while longer to get this right, then we're going to do that. Because we don't, we don't want to rush. We don't want to make a rash decision just to appease a few that are complaining, okay? We just are going to do it. This Board of County Commissioners has proven in the past that we don't necessarily do what is politically expedient, but we do what's practical. And we're not going to be rushed or pushed into making a decision that doesn't work for Sota County. This thing, the Solid Waste District, in the past, has been a nightmare at times. This goes back many, many, many years. And for the most part, we inherited some of these messes. And we need to fix the problems, and they're not easy. And it's something that we're working with the Lawrence County Commissioners on. We don't agree on what's going on. And we don't. We simply just do not agree. And I'll even say that the three of us have had, you know, we don't necessarily agree on the path forward 100%. We got to find a compromise. And we're hoping to do that at noon today.
Well, to kind of piggyback on that, those comments and the question that I asked on this matter, it's, I mean, it's common knowledge now through general public, through all the reporting and different things, that Lawrence County Commissioners and Sota County Commissioners have equal vote as to filling that position.
Yes.
Are all the responsibilities, whether they be legal or fiscal, also equal as they are with the vote?
Unfortunately, yes. That is what we found. We've asked, is there a way to break the tie? Is there a way to, is there a system to do so? And are, we have been told no.
Well, what I'm trying to find out is, are the funding mechanisms exactly the same for Lawrence and Sota? And if not, you're shaking your head. Now, what are the differences?
We contribute more to the Solid Waste District than Lawrence County does through parcel fees.
Why is that?
Because of the sheer number of parcels. We have more. And we are a larger county. And that's, but really, look, we're looking for equal representation. Don't necessarily, we don't necessarily have to have 60-40 or 55-45. We're talking about, we need better representation, and we need to be able to take cases to our municipal court and be successful, all right? I was asked last week by Sam if there was problems with our municipal court, and I refuse to condemn our municipal court. We need to bring good cases to our municipal court. That's my opinion, okay? So I'm not going to say anything negative about the municipal court judges whenever I've heard from municipal court that we need to do a better job of bringing cases.
So have previous cases been flawed from a procedural standpoint, or?
I think that falls back on the personnel issues that I was referring to, that I'm not going to go into detail about because they are personal issues. And I'm just not going to go there. I just won't. These are personnel that do no, they no longer work for the Solid Waste District, okay? And I'll leave it at that. So, but we really want to sit down, and for anybody to say it's inept, or I've heard some coverage here lately on social media, people attacking us, saying that, you know, whatever, it's all political. There's no space for that. Recycle program's running just fine. Litter Control guy that just resigned is being replaced. It's already been in the paper. We shared it again last night. The issue, we have an interim director. She is doing all the duties of the director. People need to understand that. She is the interim director. She's doing the job. So the job is being done. The major issue is going forward. How do we do that? And we're keeping things moving. It's not like nothing's being done. That's not the case.
So for, I'm sorry. So for clarification sake, you are saying that Stephanie Helms is doing a good job in, as the interim director, the concerns the commissioners have in Sota County are procedural issues?
I would say yes to the first statement. Second, yes to the second as well.
Okay.
Yes.
That's all I have on agenda.
Yeah. She's doing what she's being asked to do. And we are having a disagreement on who should be the director, okay? That's a disagreement, because we had applicants that applied, and how the Solid Waste District will be managed and moving forward, and how to do that. We have some disagreements, and we're going to hash those out today. We are going to hash them out today. We've got to a point where we're just not, we're not going to move forward without a solid agreement today, because we need to know exactly what's going to happen.
Thank you very much.
We've done our best to negotiate. We've done our best to discuss. And the commissioners in Lawrence County have their opinion. We have ours. And we are going to do what's best for the citizens of Sota County.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to add, at this point, there's no hostility between
No.
Lawrence County and Sota County. We just have some different ideas. And at this point in time, we're trying to work those out.
Yeah, and just like Mike said, this isn't, this isn't personal at all. It very much is business. This is very much business. And, you know, you, Mike, you made a really great comment there, because we work very well with the commissioners of Lawrence County. Matter of fact, I just talked to, you know, Chairman Holliday just this past week about, you know, the Haverhill Corridor and the joint agreement that we signed last year in regards to what we're doing on economic development in the Haverhill Corridor. And her exact sentiments were, look, we need to get this behind us on Solid Waste. We're working on many, many, very important things right now. This is a distraction. Let's get this done. We really want to focus on economic development. We really want to move on the Haverhill Corridor. These are things we've been working on for a year now. Robert can expound on that more, but we've talked about it in this meeting. Anybody that's watched and listened, I think it's probably been even in the written press, that, you know, the joint cooperation agreement. We have a very good working relationship with Lawrence County. This is a speed bump. This isn't, this isn't a mountain. We're going to get through this. And that's their sentiments as well, I can tell you, because we talked to them, and we, it's very cordial, and we just have a difference in opinion. That happens in business. You have to work through those differences if possible. You have to steer the ship, and at some point, we'll reach harbor. We're just not there yet. And it's just going to take a little bit of time. And it's important not to rush into a decision that doesn't take care of the concerns of everybody involved, because if not, you'll just revisit it later. You'll just come back to it again, and it'll be a problem again. We want to settle this and really get this ironed away. So we're trying to do that. But we're not going to be bullied, and we're not going to be rushed into making a decision that's bad for Sota County.
Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick?
I just had a question on number three, just kind of...
Number three. Yes, sir. This is our wonderful bill we pay every month for indigent defense. As you know, the state of Ohio lowered the rate from 85% back down to 70%, which means the general fund is taking it on the chin again. Ohio Public Defender reimbursement for June 2020, and Patrick, they always, they're always usually about three months behind in their, how they do it. Amount submitted was $42,496.56. The amount rejected was $4,661.08. I apologize, I have not been able to dig into that. I've been under the weather.
That's 70%. Right now, we're at 70%. However, if you take into account the other $4,661.08, that would decrease that.
To 60-some, yeah.
Yeah, it would be, let's see, what'll go here?
Another 10%.
I can give you an exact figure here.
Thirty, the amount approved was 37,853?
It's about 62.32%. But actually, effectively, that we got back.
I've been under the weather. The last few days, I hadn't had time to really dig into the amount rejected. Amount reimbursed was $26,484.79.
But COVID-19 had a lot to do with the amount of money that was taken out of the mix at the state level. So that's where we're at tonight.
Our jail is back up to 150, what was it, 159 or 100? We're starting to creep back up, and the courts are very busy, because they have the backlogs. So they're trying to get caught up. So there's a lot going on there. Anything else? Okay. Anything else on the agenda?
I don't think anything on the agenda right now.
Nothing on the agenda, okay. All right, gentlemen in the press, for things off the agenda.
Okay, I've got quite a bit, actually. First of all, pertaining to Children's Services, I mean, obviously, it's an election year for two candidates that are sitting here now. There've been a lot of accusations made, that continue to be made throughout the county about the county's handling of recent events in Children's Services, both this year and last year. How accurate are those assessments of the commissioner's responsibility and the commissioner's oversight? And, you know, if there is direct oversight involved, what can the county commissioners do to rectify some of the bad situations that have taken place and loss of life?
Well, briefly, from a legal standpoint, people need to realize that Children's Services has a board of directors who control, they actually have the power of hiring and firing of personnel. They also work within the Ohio Revised Code. That being said, there's very little we can do from a legal standpoint. But I know Kathy had some things to expound on that, and I want her to do that part.
Well, the situation is this. We appoint the board. And as time would go by, if something happens and those, and those board members are not doing their job, we can't even remove them. They have to serve their term and then be replaced. Now, of the board members that are there now, I think there's only two left from the original board. So we have all new board members, and they're doing a very good job. They represent the county in various ways, a doctor, educational people. They're covering all of our interests. The thing is, with what has happened in the last year, you know, we have probably talked about, you know, advice, suggestions, and things of that nature. But they, you know, we really don't have any way to be in control of that. They make their own decisions. They have their board. They make their own decisions. But now, with, we were without a director for quite some time. There was an interim director. And then we, we had Lowell Thompson, and he did a very good job to try to
Lowell Howard.
Howard.
Yeah.
To rectify the situation that he discovered. So with that being said, we have a new director, and he's, we've met with them and the board several times now. They are working diligently to correct any deficiencies in there. And they have hired new people. And so we're very pleased with the changes and improvements they've made. With your comment about some of the comments being made, I know it's an election year, but some of those accusations are deplorable in reference to the commissioners and our responsibility towards the deaths of these two children that passed in the last year. I don't know how anyone could, could make those allegations, or, I just find it deplorable. And I don't care, I don't care who's running or what the situation is. I just think it's deplorable. So I, we'll just get past this. The election's in about 30 days, 40 days, and hopefully, you know, most people out there understand. And we've talked about it so many times in this meeting. I believe most people understand, you know, the procedures and how Children's Services work. But there's still those out there. And again, I'll stress it again, because it's an election year, they will make, just ask the director or the board members if these people that are making these allegations have ever attended a meeting. And I can tell you, they haven't. So...
Well, in that vein, and I'm sorry for the bluntness, as this is going to come across, but does this board of commissioners ever instruct the board of Children's Services what to do? Do you tell the board of commissioners, I mean, I mean, excuse me, the Children's Services Board, do you instruct them about how to handle certain personnel cases or individual cases?
No.
I mean, I hate to be that blunt and that forward, but...
And we can't. We can't. The, can I?
Certainly.
Because I, I'll be honest with you. It's been really hard for me to stay quiet with some of the accusations that are going around by certain political figures. It's reprehensible. It is reprehensible to say that the county commissioner somehow had something to do with the death of Dylan Groves, to plaster newspaper articles on a web whatever, on Facebook or whatever, and saying, somehow implying that the county commissioners caused the death of Dylan Groves. The two people who caused the death that killed Dylan Groves are in prison today. They went to court and jury of their peers. They were found guilty of murder, and they were put away, probably pretty much for life, okay? Annabelle Green's murderers, murderer, will go up for trial in the near future. I'm here in January, I believe now is what I'm hearing. That will be tried. The situation surrounding Children's Services, who's responsible for those shortcomings? That is still being decided and investigated by BCI, which is a third-party investigatory agency, Bureau of Criminal Investigations. That jury is very, very much still out. That's going to eventually be referred to our prosecutor's office. And am I upset that it's taken BCI so long to bring justice to bear for Dylan and Annabelle? Yes, I am. I'm very upset about that. I don't know why it takes BCI other than there's a lot of bad people out there doing a lot of bad things in a lot of bad ways in our state. And BCI is just overwhelmed with bad people right now. But to basically insinuate that we had something to do with their death is reprehensible. It's just wrong. And the individual knows it's wrong. But yet, like Kathy said, they try to take pop shots at the commissioners during election years, and we're used to it. But when it comes to Children's Services, the board very much acts independently. To answer your question, they act independently. To answer your question, they act independently. And once they are appointed, they come together, they, they have meetings. They've been having public meetings, uh, which kudos to them. I mean, they have. People that are concerned are very much welcome to attend those meetings, and some do. I think Kathy's right in pointing out that the individuals that are, uh, blasting the Commissioners right now and blasting Children's Services have never attended, or I've never seen them there and probably haven't attended anytime soon or recently since all this started. That's, you know, that's their desire, that's their, you know, they're free to do whatever they want to do. But if you go to those meetings and you sit in those meetings and you listen to what's said, and we're, we're actually restricted, we can only send one person at a time to their Board meetings because of quorum issues, they are doing a, a lot of work, they're trying, they really are. Jason Mantel has been a breath of fresh air, he really has. And he came in at a very difficult time, I mean, a very difficult time. Lowell began a process, Vicki took over after him, and, and, and then, you know, of course, we, we, we saw where Children's Services Board hired Tony, or, I'm sorry, uh, Jason Mantel. And that was a decision that they made. They, they hired him through a pool of, golly, I think it started with, with fifteen to twenty applicants. You asked if we tell them what to do, we do not. We don't tell them what to do. We don't tell the Board what to do. If they see, have I ever called a Board member and talked to a Board member or ran into a Board member? We've, we've ran into and we've discussed issues with Children's Services. I've shared my opinion. We shared, we've shared our opinion in this meeting. We, this goes back two years when, with the death, death of Dylan Groves. Prior to that, this Board of County Commissioners was very critical about what was going on. We, we stated we had concerns. We stated, prior to that, there was funding issues. We, we, we addressed several issues that were being echoed by members of the county, our members of our, our schools and, and others that were, you know, automatic reporting agencies, where they were telling us about these things, they were calling and begging for help. We were trying to help then, we were trying to steer. We started appointing new Board members, much to the chagrin of several people in our, our county, people that were very, uh, oh, gosh, I guess you could say that it was, uh, not politically expedient not to reappoint certain people to that Board. But the County Commissioners made difficult decisions based upon what was best for the kids of this, this area. What we thought, we didn't back down from that, we're not going to back down from that. We think we made right decisions, and, and people can have their opinions about that, that's fine, you know? But we did. And the Board is, as Kathy mentioned, is new, pretty new, and they're doing the work. The Board, the, the, Jason is doing work. I just talked to Jason this morning. We talk every week, more than once a week. We, 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 we are constantly talking to say, you know, how can we, how can we help? What can we do? Talking about the hiring, they're hiring people, caseworkers, they're, they're busy. We talked about the intake center this morning. You know, someone keeps on saying, well, we need to build Children's Home. All right, eleven million dollar levy, three million dollars a year operating cost after that, and the state doesn't support it. Where does that go? Where does that go? That's the idea that's being thrown out there. Taxpayers of Souda County will pay for that. We, we can, we can throw that out. I don't know if it'll be supported. So to answer your question, we're doing, we're doing what we can, living within our means, living within the budget that's been truncated by federal and state decisions, dropping our, our general revenue fund down seventeen percent with the loss of MCO. We had no control over that whatsoever. So the question is, what do we do within the scope of what we have to work with in order to help these kids? What we've decided to do is we're gonna, we're gonna create a Children's Intake Center. We've done that. We're doing that, we're in the process of doing that. Just talking to Jason about it this morning, we've been, we're looking at properties. And, and we're doing all that we can to bring that to fruition. You are literally creating something from nothing. We don't have a facility right now. We have to create it, and we have to do it within the legal framework of what is allowed within the Ohio Revised Code and the Administrative Law Code. Those things, we have to satisfy those things, it's gonna take time, Bill. And I appreciate the question, I really do, because I think...
I wasn't trying to single out anybody.
And I know you're not.
Asking about that, because there's been a lot of chatter going on for some time.
And I've seen it too. And actually, the County Commissioners appreciate the opportunity to express our thoughts because we don't always get that chance. You know, and even with the death of Dylan Groves and Annabelle Green, there is still an open criminal investigation here. We can't talk about that. So it's very tough to, to be able to say too much and, and, and be questioned by the public that don't even know the details of what's going on. That's the part that really, you know, upsets you, but that's just me. And I'm not, I'm not even upset. I'm just really shocked by some of the rhetoric that's coming from people that should know better, should really know better.
You know, one, one of the main things that people need to realize is that the state of Ohio sets the standards for how these children are to be cared for. And they've been very adamant about the kinship renew- unification. And if, if people were aware of it, it's, it's a problem statewide because the people that are killing these children are their family members, their parents and their grandparents. And, uh, there's not only been happening here, but even Gallya County, here not too long ago, a, a mother killed her daughter. So, you know, people need to realize that if they want things to change, the place to start's at the state level. And I've talked to some people at the state level, and, and, you know, it's gonna take time, and it's gonna ha- take a, a huge effort to get, uh, the legislators and everybody behind changing some of the laws that they have that, that controls the environment these people live in, these children, and, and where they're placed.
Yeah, to be truthful, a- and we've all read Dylan's Law as it was presented by several members of our, you know, several citizens of Souda County, was presented at state level. Um, I support that, I, I, I've read every bit of it. What they found is, in order to implement Dylan's Law, it would be very expensive. There's a lot, a lot of pieces there. Of course, the argument, the counterargument that is, to that is how precious and how valuable is a child's life? It's, it's, it's priceless. So when you look at that and you say, okay, well, what's it gonna cost? That's what we're, we're battling right now, and we're talking at state level here, okay? Is how much would it cost to implement Dylan's Law? How much would it cost to, to do that? And these are the discussions we're having with our state representative. We've had these discussions, and he's having discussions with others at the state level in the Budget Office and places like that, and the attorneys to determine, you know, how can this be done? My argument is, and, and I use this analogy a lot, uh, Mike is the king of analogies, he really is. I probably picked this up from you. But, you know, how do you eat an elephant? One, one bite at a time. So you gotta take pieces, and you have to go after those pieces. And what's the most valuable way? What's the most valuable thing we could do right now? What's that cost? Let's do that. This couldn't happen at the worst time. The state budget has been wrecked. It really has. COVID has caused huge problems at the state level. So, and, anytime you talk about adding that, or millions of dollars to the budgets, you're, you're, you're gonna get pushback. You're gonna get pushback. We're of the mind. Kinship is broken, uh, you know, kinship placement, that's broken. The, uh, amount, reunification is broken. There's a lot of things that are broken in our children's system that need to be fixed. But as Mike said, it has to happen north of here. We can't fix it locally because we are creatures of statute. We follow the rules. Children's Services follows the rules that are set forth by them. And those standards are substandard in my mind in some of those cases. But they still have to follow the letter of the law. It has to change in Columbus. And we need a critical mass of people to say that. It's one thing for us to say it, it's another thing for the public to make calls, write letters, and, and really lobby on behalf of our children. We need to work together to do this. We do.
Just to, one, one last, uh, point I want to make. In spite of the fact that we, we, we don't have any control over the Board and they make their own decisions, that's not, doesn't mean, you know, when things happen, that we don't have the same concerns as everyone in the community and the same, we're, we're not feeling the same distress and, and horror of the things that happen. And we are, we do voice our concerns to them, and they, you know, they listen to us. And, um, but again, that doesn't mean we're just sitting here because we don't have any control, that we're not doing anything. And every meeting that we've had with them, you know, we, we, we've discussed our concerns with them, and they listen, and, uh, and we've seen changes.
Yeah.
So I just want everyone to know that we're not just sitting here because that's what it, it, some of the, uh, suggestions there from the naysayers or...
And, and I really think three things that we've, we've done here recently that are within our purvey to try to facilitate. A lot of times, you're facilitating change, okay? One thing is, is getting Job and Family Services and Children's Services working together. I, I think that with, uh, Jason and Tammy, what they've done, that's been public, that's been here. They've came, they've talked about it. The, you know, looking at where they're, they're looking at how they can do their funding, how they... One of the big issues was people complaining about all the call-ins and how the phone wasn't getting answered. Well, guess what? Now that they're addressing that as a combined effort, we're doing that. The Special Victims Unit, we're funding a Special Victims Unit, never been done before in Souda County. I know, just talking to the prosecutor yesterday, the prosecutor had a wonderful meeting with other members of law enforcement yesterday, talking about the framework and the groundwork that's gonna be put together for the Special Victims Unit. That is happening right now. And the third thing is, is we are actively working on a safety intake center. Call it what you will, uh, but we're gonna, you know, where we can have that buffer when these kids are, things have happened in their lives, you know, they're taken out of their homes. There, they, there's been an incident that's occurred where they can go and they can get mental health, physical health. They can get those kind of services and help and assistance. And it gives the, the, the courts time to find safe, a safe placement. Uh, gives the Children's Services time to do their background checks, gives everybody that, that buffer that we need, that little bit of time that, A, where the child can be assessed, the young person can be assessed, and get the critical necessary needs met that they need to have met. But then also to give the adults in the room time to find adequate placement, safe, adequate placement. And that's hard to do on a weekend. That's hard to do on a Sunday afternoon at two o'clock when no one's around, you know? It's, it's just difficult to do. And Children's Services, they're, they're twenty-four seven. People, people need to realize that, they're on call, they're, they're doing this stuff over the weekend. This isn't easy work. It's not easy work, and it's gonna take time.
If, if this is successful, this shelter, uh, it, it would even be nice as, you know, that, that we had a center for, you know, uh, women of domestic violence, to bring them in for the same situation, so they don't have to stay and keep their children in a violent situation that they could come in and perhaps have a safe center, a temporary safe center. But we have to, one thing at a time, like you said, one bite at a time.
Right. So we're working on it, and it's not that nothing's being done. Rome wasn't built in a day. It, it takes time to do these things, and you have to go through the legal framework to do them. We're getting there.
I had one more kind of a, a big giant question. I was gonna ask the Commissioners, but I don't know if it's breaking protocol. I know Mr. Horton was here today. I can ask him directly possibly because it kind of concerns...
Well, we, we knew that there was a possibility with the release of the SOPA audit that there might be questions.
See, I did file a public records request for that audit and the management letter.
Okay, well, um, Mr. Horton, would you like to handle this portion of the, the meeting? Uh, would you care to come over to the microphone, actually? What are your...
If, if I could, I...
See what your questions are.
Yeah. Uh, the audit itself was pretty, I think it was sixty-eight pages. And, and the interest of accuracy and fairness, I did not read every single page of sixty-eight pages. I did look through, uh, the vast majority of the audit, and I went to, I'd also requested the management letter that, that came with the finalization of the audit. And there were some things in there that I wanted to ask the Commissioners about, but since you're here, I'd rather address you directly.
Ask us all, we're all here.
Okay, uh, outside of, uh, it's, it seemed throughout the audit there was a thread that there were not policies, uh, in place to deal with some compliance matters and things. I don't know how long that's, that's been the way, um, the Port Authority's operated or not. But towards the end of the management letter, there were a number of things that, that came out in the audit. For example, uh, there was a seventy-five thousand dollar donation that was made to SOPA that was later withdrawn. And while the audit said that was allowable, it still might raise a question regarding the transfer of public monies. There was also a twenty-five thousand dollar donation that was made from a, a local entity that was withdrawn at the same time. They didn't list any reasons, but the same finding was held while it was legal. It, it could raise questions in the future if SOPA didn't address this through a policy change. I also noticed, um, it wasn't in the management letter, but throughout the audit, uh, the city of Portsmouth had given about ten thousand dollars, I think, per quarter to SOPA. And while that money wasn't, I didn't see where that was returned, I didn't see where that had continued past a certain point. That's one section, if you could, I'd like for you to address, and, uh, the second part of it. The SOPA credit card, uh, one of them that was used, it appears that management used that for the purchase of Ohio State football tickets, the purchase of alcohol. There was, huh, four hundred and fifty-five dollars of expenditures made on credit card that had no detailed support, and I'm quoting directly from the audit, had no detailed support on file to determine if the expenditures were for a proper public purpose. It also said that, uh, the executive director had utilized a credit card to make a number of other purchases, but they could not be verified or determined, or not if they were typical, proper, public purchase. Is SOPA going to take some measures to correct those? And were you aware of those when, when you came in, or?
No, I wasn't, I wasn't aware of, I wasn't aware of them when they took place, I wasn't here. When I came in and, and took the chairman's seat and started going back through the files, I realized there was gonna be a lot of problems. That was one of the reasons it's taken over a year to do this audit.
Well, originally, I'm sorry, there's a lot here. Originally, the audit was deemed, or SOPA was deemed inaudible.
That's, that's...
Why, why did that happen?
Well, that was in the transition. When there was, you know, when I came in and took the chair, there was a transition prior to me taking the chair, being elected for, to be chairman. And, um, the old Board, they were retiring, I mean, they, yeah, I mean, they were...
Resigning.
Resigning, yeah, every day. They were just dropping like flies. I mean, it was, it was unbelievable. But, um, and there was no transmission, you know, transition, no smooth transition for that to take place. They left, and it was it. Didn't hear from them, wouldn't talk to you or anything. When, when the audit came due, the existing treasurer had agreed to file a Hinkle report. We have to file a Hinkle report every year. And the last meeting I was in that we discussed that, he was to do that, that following week. It didn't happen, didn't happen, next thing you know, the Commissioners receive a resignation letter from him. But he paid himself for that. So we started trying to get into the Hinkle report, figure out how it was done. Well, by that time, it had gone. They took it right up to that date, you have a time limit to get it in. We missed the time limit. So by missing that time limit, they didn't have, the state auditor didn't have the information they needed to do an audit. So they declare you inaudible. So they declare you unauditable.
So that the information was embedded in you?
Correct, right, so they declare you that. In doing so, what a lot of people don't tell other people, you know, they like to go out and, I mean, we're hearing it left and right here in the last two months. It's becoming a, as, as, as I, I say, and I wrote a statement and put it out, that it's a political football with some individuals. They state we're unauditable, but they don't, they don't tell you why, because I don't think they know why. And if they did, they also would know that when you're declared unauditable, you're given ninety days to rectify that situation, all right? In which we did, we hired a, a public accountant, we got all the records, Hinkle report completely done, provided them all of the records for twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen, I mean, they took every book we had. And those were books created by the old board, that was their records that were left for us to decipher. Got that done. Then they started the audit and it's taken a year. Well, through the process of the audit, they don't just go up and remove the unauditable off of their side. It stays and it will stay with anyone that gets into this situation. And there's been others in the past, it's, it's, it's the way it goes, not just us, other, other port authorities. But it stays there until that audit is completed. And once it's completed, then it's removed, you get the findings that you've received through your public records request. And you go through your meeting with them, you sit down with them, but as we stand here today, the port authority is one hundred percent clean and all measures have been put in place, so this will never happen again. Not only on our part, but the state, they're lucky they didn't get indicted.
Who is they?
I'm not gonna mention names, you can, you can go, I'm not mentioning names, I wasn't here when they were here. But the words from the auditor in our meeting is, this is all, and it's in that report that you've received, this is all highly questionable. Our, our question was, then why, why, why is it not going any further? That was our question, why is it not going any further? Well, our statutes are written as such that it'll end up being a huge lawsuit, you know, I mean, it would just be a drug-out legal battle, you know? So they chose not to pursue it, but they made changes even on the state level so that that can never happen again with any port authority in the state.
So just a couple seconds ago, you said that you had addressed, um, some of these issues already. Are you talking about from a, a procedural standpoint that what the audit requested, that you put policies in place that don't allow certain things?
They did. The state auditor did.
So, okay.
They changed theirs, so you can't do it again. I mean, you know, just like the commissioners, we operate under the Ohio River Vice Code, it's that simple. And we are sticking to it, to the T, that's how we operate today. We've streamlined the board, we do not have a credit card, we've separated and segregated all our accounts to specific things we do. We have a general fund, we have the fund for JDIso for the pass-through money, it's all separated. It's four counts, right, Mark? But we keep it separated so that way, it's, it's control measures, what they call it, it's not a policy, it's control measures.
So audits of this, of this nature tend to run, from what I've been able to ascertain by reading, they run about a year and a half to two years behind, correct?
That is correct.
So a year and a half or so, a year from now, are you willing to go on record to say that you believe SOPA will have a very clean audit?
Well, that depends on who, that, no, I won't, I won't say that. As long as I'm chairman and as long as the board that's there is in place, yes.
Well, that's my point, you are the current chairman, correct?
That's right, but I don't, I might not be the chairman next year.
Well, within a year, yeah, but within a year, the audit will come across from-
Oh, yeah, 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 okay, yeah, yeah, you're, you're using that, okay, that, that is correct, it will, yeah, that is correct. Matter of fact, we've received the highest opinion of the state right now.
So you will go on record to say?
Yes.
SOPA will have a clean audit?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And you don't follow up on that?
Absolutely. Long as I'm, as long as I'm here and, and the way we're set up right now, yes, it'll be clean. There's no doubt about it.
All right, and that, I mean, that uncovers, uh, those are the questions I wanted to ask you guys today, so. I'm, I'm done with off agenda and on agenda.
You mentioned a statement that the port authority made. You had made, the port authority had sent a statement, uh, in regards to the audit.
Yeah, I don't have it with me, I, Matt, Bill asked, he, he submitted a public records request for it, he had, and I think I copied, I sent it to the commissioners yesterday that that had been done.
I don't know if you'd seen it yet.
I think I seen it.
But we, yeah, but we, but we've made a statement, I sent it to Bill, so it'll be published through Bill, um.
I haven't seen it yet, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, we, we, we know that, uh, that there was money donated to the port authority that, that, uh, the donor asked for that money back. Uh, we were there at that meeting and I never understood that myself because, you know, I've, I've donated to, uh, different things, you know, to, uh, the I Foundation through the Shriners and through St. Jude, I've given money in the past in different things and, and I never was of a mind that if I had a little bit extra money, I donated to someone like that. And then all of a sudden, I had an unexpected tire blowout on me that I would cancel that check so I could pay for the tire.
Right.
I just put it on a credit card, I wouldn't, I wouldn't ask for money back once I've given it away.
Right.
I mean, I, I, I don't believe in giving something away and then asking for it back.
Yeah, well, and that led to some really, some really tough questions by them, I mean, that, they, they graffled with that for a while, well, all of those findings. And that's what's in that statement that you specifically requested.
Well, that's what I pointed out, was that-
But to answer, but to answer-
They said it was legal, but they had questions because it, once it's donated, once it's donated, it's considered to be public money, right?
Yes, yes.
And that was the major debate, was how is that possible? How can a private entity donate into a public entity such as the port authority and then retract that money back after the fact?
Right.
And then have public and private funds commingled as well?
Right.
It's very messy, those, those are very messy accounting practices and I believe that is what the auditor has now said, can never happen again anywhere in Ohio.
Right, right.
That was embedded in, in the management-
The finding, the finding, so-
It's in there, yeah, I mean, and that's what they did and, cause we asked that and they said, well, you know, the rulings they had were broad. And I mean, there was a fine line. And according to them, they were on that line, big time. And it, it, it was, it was, it was a tough one for them, it really was. But this is where they chose, but they looked us straight in the eyes and clearly said, we, we have made it, we have made sure this will not happen in the state again. So they've changed, I think you're gonna see the changes in that. I haven't personally seen them yet, but, you know, you, I guarantee you, that's what, that's what they're talking about. But to get those informations, those are the findings, I read them just like you read them, they're very clear, there's a lot of doubt, there was a lot of questions. It won't happen again, and they told us, you don't do it again, you know, it's not gonna happen, we've made those changes. If you want any further information on that, you're gonna have to call Faber, you're gonna have to call the, the auditor and say, okay, here.
I will.
Here's, here's where this is at and I'd like to know what, what you've done.
Any, anybody that was involved in that take back or, or was a party to it is probably in the la- very last meeting minutes of SOPA. Just a tidbit.
Yeah, it's actually mentioned in the, uh, management letter. So, but the, uh, I, I wanna, I wanna state that I appreciate the port authority getting this cleaned up. I know that it also cost the port authority a lot of money to get this financially fixed, I mean, to get it fixed, to get it auditable, to clean up the mess.
We're, we're seventeen grand, we're seventeen grand and we still got, we still got another real kind of-
Yeah, to this point, between the auditor of the state and the CPO, he's spent seventeen thousand and twenty-seven dollars.
But I appreciate your diligence in getting this fixed. This is something that as a result of, this is something that happened three years ago, literally, almost three years to the date.
Yeah.
That all of this happened and, you know, I, I'll go on record and say, and I'll say this, and I'll say it again, I said it then and I'll say, I said it, I'll say it now, that the events that happened, I made the comment that the state auditor at one day would find all of it very interesting. And I believe that the state auditor has spoken. Um, and the actions of the former port authority, not all, not all of them, not all the members, but some have been found to be-
Questionable.
Questionable. Um, I think I was putting it lightly. And this is a third-party audit, this isn't a county speaking, this isn't the port authority speaking, this is the state auditor of the state of Ohio. They spent a lot of time studying this and looking at this, that's why it took so long. And something to be said that people need to understand, that they were bound not to say anything. Even while people are taking pop shots at them, these gentlemen weren't allowed to say anything, because they were in the middle of an audit, you can't say anything. You have to stay quiet about what's going on. And, uh, I'll be honest with you, some people owe them an apology.
Yeah, yeah, we came real close in the, in, in the, uh, statement that we put out, that was gonna be the last paragraph to ask for a public apology for anyone who has talked negatively about what's going on in the audit and-
Probably won't get that, Robert, but-
Well, and that's why I took it out, I just said, the heck with it, we've done a good job, we're clean, we're up the highest ratings right now, we're doing good things and we're moving forward.
And that's the important thing to remember, when SOPA no longer was doing economic development as the lead agency for Souda County, which is what all the great debate was about in twenty seventeen. They were still the bonding and land transfer agent and, and, and other things that they could do, remediation, things like that. And they were told to continue on that mission and they've done that in a big way, in a huge way. And that doesn't get much press, but I'm gonna tell you something, SOPA is doing some very, very, very important work right now for this county. And now is not the time to take pop shots at them, trust me on that.
No.
So.
If I may clarify something that I said. The public records request that I filed with, with their office pertained to the management letter. The actual audit itself, I've been tracking for some time to see when that would be released, is online.
Yeah.
However, the management letter, when I looked, was not online.
You have to, yeah.
That's why, but I wanted to clarify that, so anybody can see the audit.
And that's fine, look, we're, we're transparent, I know they are, um, there was things in the management letter that go into much greater detail, uh, than what the actual audit does.
Well, it goes into the findings of the, of, of those two years, what they found.
Specifically, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. But, um-
That's all I got.
But it won't, and it won't be on, it won't be on the auditor's website, it has to be specifically asked for.
Yeah, the management-
Correct, as a public request, which you found out and which you did rather fast. But anyway, we appreciate what you do, Bill. Do you wanna go any further with what economic, while I'm here, with what economic development's been done, I thought we would give you a lot of-
You know what, we haven't had you here for a while. So I know economic development can't always talk about everything they're working on because some stuff is confidential between them and companies, but go ahead, Robert, that's fine.
And this, okay, and, and we're gonna give you a highlight of the last year, we're gonna try to bring you up real quick and, um, and, and, and current. And of course, there are a couple that aren't on here because of that very thing, they're, you know, we're under-
Gag order.
Yeah, there it is, right.
Yeah.
But, um, there's been some, there's, there's been some mention i- in, in the recent past of, uh, of JDIso, I, I wanted to clear that up with you guys too. As, JDIso is a tool that we use in economic development. And what JDIso is, that's the Joint Economic Development Initiative of Southern Ohio. And, um, that's what that stands for. It's four counties that were comprised for FLUR to do their funding, FLUR does a X amount of dollars of funding, you know, they're on the, you know, they do the, they're working on the A plant, but they do X amount of funding for the four counties and that's why this was created. FLUR can't just give money to a private individual and neither can JDIso, there's-
Right.
But it was set up from, from the economic development departments of the four counties to manage that funding and we score, we, we bring projects from each county to the table and we score those projects and who scores the highest receives the funding for grants.
So it's, so it's something that's decided by the multi-county agency?
Four of us.
No, no one person can make a decision, it literally is a scoring, a points-based decision-making process for funding for whatever project in the four county region.
Correct, correct, right. And, and that is exactly right, Ryan.
That's very fair.
And then, after we approve it, then it goes to a steering committee to FLUR and it's, and it's looked at again. They, they double-check our standards, so to speak, and then the money's released. The money's released to JDIso. JDIso not being able to pass that money straight to the company that was awarded the grant, here's another place where we play a big part with SOPA. We've reiterated agreement with them, we keep it updated yearly on a regular basis and SOPA is the pass-through for that funding. So the checks for those companies from JDIso go into a dedicated account with SOPA and then SOPA writes those checks to the companies within those four counties. And the checks are presented by the economic development agent of that county.
Creates more accountability, transparency.
It's control.
And auditable, something that can be audited.
Absolutely, it's control, right. So, so, you know, for, for people to think, you know, because of the statements that we've heard in the, in the recent past about JDIso, we felt that, that others in the county, the citizens of the county could be misled by these statements, that JDIso wasn't being used anymore or didn't exist anymore. But I just wanted to verify to everyone, they're very active in a huge way and the agreements with SOPA and JDIso are still in place. I personally sit on the board, um, and we meet monthly, so, uh, to discuss different, different projects and things that we're doing.
And I believe Souda County businesses have been benefactors of JDIso money.
I'm getting ready to go into that, um.
Okay.
Recent, recent funds that we have used with JDIso, and, and these are projects that we've done, uh, is out at the airport to relocate power lines in the new sore business park. JDIso actually funded twenty thousand seven hundred and ten dollars to, to remove those lines and relocate them to where the new dedicated road will be, Barclow Road, yep. They funded the wastewater study for the Haverhill Corridor and Lawrence County Corridor of forty-eight thousand dollars we received through that. And after we got the study done, we went into the engineering. JDIso funded fifty thousand dollars of- JDISO funded fifty thousand dollars of that engineering. We got a grant through JDISO to that, and we coupled that with a fifty thousand eight hundred and fifty-three dollar grant from Jobs, Ohio, and Ohio Southeast.
And that's all for Haverhill?
That's, yeah, those, yeah, one, yep, the first one was the study, we got it done, then you go into engineering. And that brings up another statement with that, with those two projects, brings up another statement that, that has been made recently of, that insinuated that the counties, Lawrence County and Sautauq County, weren't working together. It just, it insinuated that, and I just want to make sure the citizens of Sautauq County are aware that, uh, we are very much in tune with each other. The county commissioners of Sautauq, the county commissioners of Lawrence County, the economic development department of Sautauq County, and LEDC. We are all on the same wavelength when it comes to that heavy industrial corridor that encompasses both counties. And this is a result of that. As we move forward to get the studies done, as we move forward to get the wastewater, I mean, the engineering done. And this is also working with the Sautauq County Sanitary Sewer Department. At that same time, Bill Dingus, Jeremy Clay with LEDC, and the Lawrence County Commissioners have been diligently seeking grant funding to move it from out of engineering to reality. We solicited Jobs Ohio on the project. They've come in and they've committed, and we're working diligently on this now. And I would venture to say in the next month, this project will be put to bed. It's a four-point-three million dollar wastewater sewer improvement that will go from Wheelersburg all the way through the Haverhill area. All of that industrial property down there, cross the county lines and go into Lawrence County and cover all of that property to where old, what is it, the old fifty-two comes back out to new fifty-two. That line will cover every bit of that.
County Route One.
Yep, yep, and, and the entire project will be covered by grant funding. It's awesome, and that's all because of that joint initiative that the county commissioners from both counties took in doing that MOU and agreeing that we all work together for the betterment of that corridor. And it's huge.
Robert, I think it really opened the eyes of Jobs Ohio too, it really did, I mean, I think they, they saw the, the the reality on the ground, that there's a great interest in making this happen.
I mean, see, that's something too, and we, you know, I mean, we don't toot our horns all the time, maybe we should, but, but, but I want things done before I do, you know, I don't, I don't want to go out and say, hey, this is a possibility and then it not happen, and of course, you got the naysayers out there that just beat you to death with it, but, uh.
Robert, how long is this, uh, we know for the people. Just letting them know how long we've all been working on this.
Well, just the MOUs over a year and a half. We've, Mark and I have been working on this project, all these projects, for three years, that whole corridor. Bill Dingus was the first man I met in economic developments. When I took this office, two weeks after I took the office, I went down and spent time with Bill. And we've met quite a few times, almost, you know, I mean, we, we, we talk all the time and, uh.
Well, a lot of this is surrounding the pure cycle development of course.
Oh, yes.
And, you know, that, that has been in the news quite a bit. Of course, I, I know the port authority has been in the news quite a bit in regards to the pure cycle.
Yes, yes.
So there's a lot going on with that as well.
Yes.
And that's where it's so important, just my, well, it's business sense, but it's important that with the work that's ongoing with the port authority, with the bond issuance and things like that, the port authority is handling. You know, here, here we have a factory that's just across the line at the former Dow Chemical site that's going to be built. You know, they're past, they're, they're past testing, they're, they're looking at commercialization where we, you know, you have a Sautauq County entity and the Southern Ohio Port Authority that's going to bond that thing, which is huge. And then you see Sautauq County doing the wastewater treatment for that as well, which is going to benefit all the factories in that area.
And there again, take that, Brian, there again, counties working together. That bonding.
You gotta do it.
Right, and, and, but you gotta look at it all the way that, yes, Southern Ohio Port Authority is bonding it. They have their own port authority. But that was part of, of Bill Dingus, LEDC, the counties working together. Knowing that they're going to need help with infrastructure, knowing we all need to work together, we're bonding it. So we did that part of it, we're all working together to make all this happen, and, and you're exactly right.
And it's taken a lot of time.
Huge, yeah, oh yeah, since I've been here.
Time to get to where we are today.
Yeah.
It is, that's business, that, it takes time, when you're put together a multi, multi-hundred, hundreds of millions of dollars project, this doesn't happen overnight.
Yeah, I think, I think their capital investment's three hundred and seventy-eight million, we're, we're bonding three hundred and fifty million.
Yeah, three fifty, okay.
And, and they priced those bonds yesterday, and they got, I think, six, Black, Black Rock, I mean, Fangard, all the big ones. All the big boys have, have, as of yesterday, have agreed to buy the bonds from us, from SOPA. And, uh, so it's moving forward, yeah, it's moving, it's moving fast.
And, and the port authority has been working on this for?
Three years, actually longer, actually.
Started in twenty seventeen, I mean, it's been a big process.
A little bit before that, a little bit before that.
This has taken time, and this is the work that has continued.
Correct.
Even through all of this mayhem.
Correct.
The work has continued.
Correct, these were very important issues that we had to make sure we saved and, and did not let the rhetoric discredit or disrile any of it. And believe me, it's been tough because it's been out there. We don't go and tell everybody, but it's been tough. All right, so we got that, but that's what all of that has led up to. And I just want everyone to know that, yes, JDISO's alive and well, we're, we're, uh, on a first-name basis with them. And the counties, Lawrence and Sautauq County, are working hand-in-hand on a number of issues and the development of that entire area. And both economic development departments, Sautauq County Economic Development and LEDC are working hand-in-hand with a number of projects. Also, along with monies from Ohio Southeast and Jobs Ohio. Jobs Ohio has also funded all of the due diligence studies for the Norfolk Southern Haverhill property. And they have funded all of the monies for the industrial park, sewer park at the airport. So all of that's been done. And, um, we actually did a two-to-one because there was, you know, we have some private property that's inclusive of our park at the airport. And we got their due diligence done with a two-to-one grant also from Jobs Ohio. Jobs Ohio is working with us and Soul Choice. Soul Choice is moving to a new location, they've sold their building. And they're moving to a new, new location, and in that move, they intend to create in a three-year period, well, they're going to save thirty-five jobs, I believe it is, I don't have numbers in front of me. And in, within three years, create thirty more. There is, there's a, uh, there, Jobs Ohio has given them an offer letter for a substantial grant. We are currently, uh, working on the, the, uh, the fund request for that project too with JDISO. And that's ongoing. With all of these projects, we are also working and putting, putting, putting things in place to start creating TIFs for different projects that we're working on, and TIFs for the airport.
Do you explain to the public what TIFs is?
It's tax increment financing. What it does, uh, when a company comes and builds a project, X number of dollars are being paid on that land as it is for taxes, you know, it's, it's, it's raw land. And you got a tax base for that property. When you build something new on it, you're improving that property. So when a developer comes and he builds a facility on that project, they take the improvement, not the land, but the improvement. And they allow that taxing, in other words, let's just throw a number out there, we're paying a hundred dollars a month tax now. And I improve it with a two-million-dollar building, and now my tax goes up next year to five hundred. I can take four hundred of that dollars and use it to pay the infrastructure needed to build that project up to thirty years. So it, it's, it's an incentive to get buildings started, you know, to, to, that guy to step out and go, okay, wow, that's going to help me tremendously, I'll take the step and make the investment.
And, and I think that goes along with what you've done with opportunity zones.
I'm getting to it.
Okay, pace and all of those things, I think these are important things for everybody to hear.
Right, well, I just want people to know, I mean, we've been, we've been working, we've been working hard, Commissioner Davis and, 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 um, we just have, I mean, you know, we don't have time to tell everybody everything, you know. But it's, when we, when we put this together yesterday, I mean, even Mark and I are going, wow, I didn't know, we did this, you know. But just in the last year, we've had, we've, we've brought in over two million dollars just in grants from Jobs Ohio and JDISO.
Great work.
You know, and now we're looking at a four-point-three million dollar project that's getting ready to happen.
Yep.
You know, so, so, right, not to count the other ones we're still working on, but, um, but these are things that we're working on. TIFs are one of them, and these things take time because you have to set up the entity, it's, it's legal, you know, all that stuff. We have, let's see here, let me see, activity. Oh, okay, I'm going to kind of toot Mark's horn here and, and, uh. Yeah, um.
He's been patiently standing quietly behind you.
We are current, we have, have been and currently working on a, on a ten-million-dollar grant that we're working with a rather large manufacturer of ours in the Haverhill region. Yesterday afternoon, we got word, we, uh, Mark put the grant together, submitted it, the application. Yesterday afternoon, we got word, we're in the final run, and they're asking some crazy questions. I mean, you know, and it's to the point, they're wanting this particular company to show the money, you know. Don't just say, because it's an eighty-twenty grant. So the, the manufacturer has to put up two million bucks, now they want to see that in account. So I have a, a gut feeling, if, if we appease and answer these last few questions they have correctly, we're going to see this happen, knock on wood, but, uh, but, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, need some divine intervention, right? Yeah.
That's going on. We are also in the middle of, of working with, um, with, um, Mike Rays on the, uh, the building that he owns on the corner of Market and Second. That they're trying to turn into the Children's Museum, Children's Museum has of course committed to take it, if, once he gets it done. And they needed an elevator, so we are in the middle of and in the, the last running for a CDBG TOPS grant that we're putting in place. And, uh, oh, by the way too, I need you guys to do a resolution approving me to be able to go after that TOPS grant.
Okay, all right.
I mean, I'm in oceans, I'm doing it, it's all there, we're, we're looking good, but that's part of it, I have to, y'all have to.
Typical.
Yeah.
It's administrative stuff.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, this came to my mind, all right. Then, we created here recently, it's taken a while, but we've also created another tool recently for economic development. And that's, that is PACE financing. Which will allow people working or rehabbing buildings or building new buildings to get upfront financing for anything they do in that building that's energy savings. And, and, uh, the numbers are based on equipment, materials, and labor. Windows, LED lighting, you know, anything that's energy saving. And then they calculate that cost, and they give you a percentage of that cost, seventy-five, sometimes a hundred percent of that cost upfront, these, these financing agencies will give you that full amount. Here's your, here, here it is. And you can use that money for your project, capital, whatever, you know, you could use it to, for the twenty percent down on your loan to do the project. But it gives you that initiative to take the step and do the project, so it's a huge tool. Uh, that's been put in place, uh, we created it, uh, for the Harrison Township, was the initial ECID, they call it. Which is, uh, Energy, Energy, what, ECID? Improvement District, yeah, Energy Savings Improvement District. And, um, we created it for Harrison Township so that it would benefit the park, the new business park that we created at the airport. And any other business in that county, I mean, in that township. Along with that, we, we approached Portsmouth, City of Portsmouth, and asked if they would like to also become part of that ECID, and they can opt into ours because Harrison Township and the City of Portsmouth are joining.
Continous.
Areas, yeah, yeah, yeah. And, uh, and, and they did so, so we have now got an ECID that is, uh, the entire city limits of Portsmouth and Harrison Township. It is in place, um, that was officially put in place three weeks ago when we had the meeting. So, um, I'll put it this way, Brookler and Eckler at that point said, Robert, you can now go fishing. So, uh, anyone has a project that, that could fall into the criteria of energy savings, uh, you know, that they're saving, they need to come see us. And, uh, we'll get them before the board, we have a PACE board.
I guess for schools as well, am I understanding, any, any entity that's going to do energy savings of any kind, they wanted to fray those costs in a way to offset them for years, they can do that? And if I'm not mistaken, correct me if I'm wrong, but they can do that off the books, that, that, that cost or that portion of the.
It goes, it goes with the property, that is correct, that's correct. Yeah, the way it's done, you pay it back through your taxes over time.
Right.
You'll get that upfront money and you pay it back through taxes over time. David will send you, it, it, that's right. And it goes with the property, if you sell the property, that assessment, it's an assessment basically, and it, it goes right, it goes with the property.
Different way of.
And yes, as a company, if you do that, you do not have to carry it on your books.
Right.
There's a lot of advantages.
So that doesn't show us an accumbrence or any.
Correct, correct, yeah, it don't bring your bottom line down, that is correct.
There's benefits.
Yep, um, so anyway, those are being done, um, future projects that are being, oh, I want to bring these up too. We just completed grants with, uh, Ohio Southeast, Jobs Ohio, and JDISO for Schwartz Racing. Or Schwartz Race Cars. Jobs Ohio awarded forty thousand dollars, JDISO awarded them. JDI SO awarded him $24,674.
And what are they building?
Uh, he does the race car frames and he does the drop boxes for UPS.
And security fencing.
And security fencing.
Nationally?
Yeah. International. His, his car frames go all over.
Right here in Souda County.
Right, yeah, yeah. You'd never know it.
He's got clients in all over the West Coast, the Midwest, Canada, Australia and South Africa that are receiving components and chassis from Menford.
Yeah. And he's expanding his facility. He's adding equipment. This was for equipment and he's putting on jobs. We also just completed a grant request with both entities, Jobs, Ohio, Ohio Southeast and JDI SO for Mako. Mako is now expanding into another market also. Jobs, Ohio gave $26,000. JDI SO gave, gave $28,000. Um, that's also, and it really, I don't want to go too deep. I don't want to take everybody's feathers from them, but that's a reshoring project. They're bringing work back from, from China and there will be others. OSCO's involved. There will be some others involved. And I think there will be even two more projects.
Can you remind the public what Mako does?
Hmm?
Can you remind the public what Mako does? Or maybe some that doesn't know what they do or where they are?
Well, they're a foundry. Yeah, you know, so, yeah.
Machining, they do the machine, right?
Yeah, yeah. And they do the molds, still do them out of the sand, you know? The, the old sand, green sand.
The OSCO supplies that part.
And they're one of very few left. I think there's only like three or four left. And, and they're doing, they're doing real well. But this, they've created this market that is in enhanced Mako. Um, it's kettlebells.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, um, right, they were all being made in China.
Yeah, that's the, uh, Roke, Roke's, Roke Fitness, yeah.
That's right, that's right. Largest fitness company there is.
Yeah, which is supplying jobs here in Portsmouth.
Yep. And, and it's, and it's, I mean, it's done a lot, it's, it's just, it's unbelievable what it's done. I mean, it's, it's, uh, it's created this project with Mako. Of course, it's created more work for, for OSCO. And now Doc Martin with Dale and them, they're doing the packaging. So they'll make it rough, goes to Mako, Mako fine tunes it and mills it. It goes to Columbus, gets powder coated, comes back to Doc Martin, they package ship.
Doc Spartan.
Doc Spartan, yeah, I'm sorry.
You got the shoes.
Dale.
You're like a shoes.
Goes to Dale, but, but, uh, and, and they'll package and ship. So, uh, I think we'll see this grow tremendously. But we've been able to be a part of that. Um, we've received $20,000 from OVRDC for our traffic study out at our airport that we put together and got. There's been COVID assistance through Ohio and Southeast and Jobs, Ohio that we've been a part of totaling $1.2 million that has been put into Souda County that many don't know about. Um, and then AEP, we've gotten 20,000 from them to help with some of the infrastructure stuff that we've done out at the airport. Uh, just a lot of stuff. I mean, it's crazy. the water engineering study. Which one is that one, Mark? Oh, you're talking about sewer. That was the sewer, okay, okay.
You did water study out of sewer too, didn't you?
Yeah, yeah. Uh, then, uh, yeah, that was the water for sewer. Yeah, we did that study. And, um, that was the one, matter of fact, that's, yeah, that was the one where the, where the, um, OVR, no, that was traffic. The water study came from JDI SO, didn't it? Yeah, so that's what that was. That's another, that was another 20 grand. Um, we've got several projects that are still active at the airport, um, that we're looking at. The school, we are taking in a different direction, um, but it is active. I don't want to go into detail to that until I've got a better handle on exactly who we're going to partner with. But, uh, we've talked with the, uh, the, um, tri-state group that are moving down in Huntington to do the same thing with doing a satellite off of theirs. And, um, we're in talks with that. And we're also in talks with, uh, Southern University. So there's still a chance for that project. Um, we have another logistics company recently has, has expressed interest out at the airport. We've, we've put together two options, two offers that we could put together for them to show, we showed them two different ways to incentivize their projects to get them to go out there. I'm not going to mention the name just yet, but it's, it's a very substantial company. Hope, hope, hope it, hope it goes. Um, so those are things going. And then of course, you mentioned opportunity zones. That's another tool that we've created. And, and, um, we have two zones. Um, one encompasses the city of Portsmouth all the way down through New Boston to the bridge, to the CSX Bridge. And it goes up the hill a little bit. And then the other encompasses all of Harrison Township basically out there. Um, so those are just a few of the things. I hadn't hit them all. I can't remember them all. I mean, it, we're just, we're crazy. Got things going on, man. A lot of things going on. Um, we're working on trying to figure out how to make SOPA more involved with PACE financing. Um, we're trying to put stuff together there through research. The Port Authority, um, can actually finance PACE financing. And being a bonding agents that they are, they can then take those projects, bundle them and sell them on the market. So it could be a, it could be a, a huge revenue source for the future of, of, of SOPA. Um, but, uh, we, we're trying to figure out how we can generate seed money to get that started. So we'll see how it goes. Lot going on, very involved. And if anyone, anyone wants to know what's going on with economic development and/or the Southern Ohio Port Authority, don't just go talk about it. Come see us and know what you're talking about. Because I have a feeling a lot of what's being said out there, I, well, I don't have a feeling, I know. I haven't seen them. They haven't knocked on my door. And, and, uh, that door is open to all, to all. We are, you know?
And your address?
It's, uh, 502 Court Street.
All right.
Yeah.
502 Court Street.
And call me 740-357-9779. Call me. That phone's on all the time. And if you don't get me, you can surely leave, leave a message.
We thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time.
That was a lot to digest. Patrick, did you get all that? Do you still have any room on your notepad? I'm just wondering.
I know that.
Very happy.
I know that you don't like to chew your own horn, but, you know, people do not know what you're doing. And then you'll hear these sour remarks, we need economic development, we need this and that. But so perhaps maybe we could meet more often and let the public know.
And do this, sure, sure.
We can, we can. Appraise what you're doing, praise what you're doing.
There's a lot happening. It's just unreal. Mark, I'm pulling up here.
It's just a lot going on. Yeah.
Well, thank you very much for taking the time to, uh,
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you. Brian, you've been waiting for a long time. I'm sorry. Go right ahead, we'll try to speed through these, sorry.
I'm here all day.
Yeah, no, you're not.
I'm here until we're done, how about that? Uh, there are a few questions on here. Um, this one, I, I feel you guys may have addressed already, but if there are any more comments from Sin Mackley. Uh, do you have any comment on the state auditor's report on the Port Authority?
Um, saying of course is with Souda County Daily News. I, I think we've said what we, we, uh, said. I, I think that, uh, Robert has pretty much expressed the Port Authority's opinion on that. Um, we, we would like to consider this case closed and, uh, move on in a, in a positive manner and, uh, continue to work with there, anyone and everyone that'll work with us to bring about positive change to Souda County.
Also from Sin Mackley. At the last Portsmouth City Council meeting, Councilman Dunn, is it Dunn?
Yeah, Sean Dunn, yeah.
Uh, said that his last few emails to commissioners had gone unanswered. Would you care to comment on that?
Actually, I'll be honest with you. When I saw that, um, I went and looked for those emails. I still didn't find it.
I could not find them.
Did you, did you find the email he's talking about? Um, if, and if he's watching, and I'm sorry, I, like I said, I've been ill the last couple of days. If he would like to resend that, that would be great. Uh, I apologize for that. So if, if, matter of fact, I can reach out to him today. I'm not really, I'm not 100% sure exactly what that was. But we've had some email issues. Depending on the, the source, we have had some issues. So it might've gotten lost in that mix. I don't know. But, but, yeah, again, apologize to Councilman Dunn, whatever they did. We just couldn't find.
Um, if it's sent with a certain attachment, they won't come through. And he won't know and we won't know. So it has to be a PDF, if there's any attachments, it has to be a PDF or a DOCX. It can't just attach.
Yeah, I heard that and I, yeah.
We won't get them.
If he's got to resend it, um, we have, because of cybersecurity, and I'm not saying he was sending anything, you know, that was cybersecurity worthy, but there are certain things that just, our system's not allowing through. And especially with the elections going on and everything, they have really tightened up. And because the courthouse is a election spot where the early voting's happening, my goodness, they have tightened down, um, so much of what we're doing here. Even though we're not, I find it interesting, we're not connected to the Board of Elections. Physically, they're still tightening down everything all around us. So if he could resend that, that'd be great.
From Mark Craycraft. Uh, Mr. Crabtree, would you please expand on your recent written statement after a live stream drained the swamp video from Matt Seifert?
I don't know what he's referring to.
What comment?
Um, you know, all, all the [inaudible] on there.
From Randy James Trevino. Why did you appoint Colin to the ADAMH Board?
Okay, yeah, uh, that's an interesting question and one that's easy to answer. Um, I don't, I don't know the gentleman that just asked that, I'm sorry. Who was it? Who was it again?
Randy James.
Randy James Trevino.
Okay, I, anyways, Colin, he is, or she, it's, it's Randy? Is referring to Colin Finn. Uh, Colin is a Miami University student. Um, he is a Eagle Scout. He lives locally here. Um, and I believe Colin is 20, if I'm not mistaken. I could be wrong, but I believe he's 20. And what happened there is there was a vacancy with the, the Adams Board. And we received correspondence from the Adams Board, um, notifying us of the vacancy that someone had resigned and then making a recommendation for, um, us to consider, uh, Colin Finn. And I'll be honest with you, when I first got it, I thought, why would Colin want to serve on that board? I just, I just didn't, I didn't really, I, I, I wasn't sure. So I was able to get his phone number from his letter of intent. He did send a letter of intent over. I called him and I said, Colin, we got, we got this letter of intent. You know, if you wanting to serve on this board, A, can you? Can you, can you dedicate the time? Because I, I knew he was a student and I thought, you know, okay, it's going to Miami, that'd be a little hard, you know, to do, at least in my thoughts. And then secondly, do you really want to do this? Um, the Adams Board, for those that don't know, is, is drug, alcohol, mental health. It's, it, that's what the board addresses. That's what they work for. They're advocates for, uh, treating, uh, those, those things in our community. And they do a lot of important work. And I just, I called him and I asked him, I said, you know, is this something you really want to do? And he was excited. He was very excited. He's like, yes, I can de- dedicate the time. I'll drive, I'll do whatever it takes. He said, you know, I, I think it's important to have a young person's perspective on this. Um, and to be honest with you, I didn't think, that wasn't the line of thinking I was, I was giving that at the time. And, and, um, you know, he said it's important for young people to have a say. And I know one of the, the statements that was made by, uh, again, another political statement, people attacking our decisions, we stand by our decisions, but, uh, that he was too young to serve on that board. Well, what's that mean? Um, he's old enough to vote and he's old enough to go to war if he's called. So I think, I think he's old enough to serve on a board. Um, and he's not, he, he's not old enough to drink. That was the statement. Um, well, I know a lot of young people, unfortunately, that drink and do drugs in, in our community. And to have a, um, a young person willing to stand up and say, I want to serve on this board, that, I, I thought that was really great. So, um, we put a forth. Each commissioner reviewed that letter of intent and, and, um, and that's why we put him on the board. Uh, I believe it was unanimous, three to nothing, to put him on there. And as far as I know, he has served with distinction. I'm not, I'm not really sure why there was a question on him. I, I, to me, it was demeaning. I think it was sad to attack a, an Eagle Scout and a young person who wants to improve his community. I, I just don't get it. I don't, I don't, we wonder, we have young people leaving our community and we wonder why? Why would you attack a young person?
Personally, I'm thrilled to see the,
Yeah, I think he's doing a good job.
Young people's interest in, uh, government and, and all types of things that concern the community. And, uh, they, they are our future. So, you know, I don't think age has any bearing. I think we should welcome anyone, especially those young, um, people that are interested in serving their community.
Yeah, a lot of young people are very busy with college. They're, they're very busy with other activities. Um, and for him to want to volunteer for, you know, a board that, it's not glamorous. That's not a glamorous board. That's not something, you don't get paid to be on that board. You're a volunteer. It's, 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 there's nothing glamorous about that, but they do important work for our community. They really do. And, uh, and he was, that, that was sent over. I mean, we, we, that often happens. We get recommendations like that.
Right along with them.
No one else had sent anything over. So we just, you know what? I like the idea of having a young person on there personally, that's me speaking, uh, getting young person's perspective. Because you know what? Um, older, myself, others, you know, we know what we faced when we was in school. We know what we faced in, in, when we were 20 something. But there are things that are happening now, especially with social media and other ways that teens are, are tempted, how they, you know, these things are brought into their lives that we may not realize and that board may not realize where a fresh, young perspective can come in and talk about those things and say, are you aware that this is happening? And that may change how they fund, what they fund, what they do with the monies that they're given. I think a, a young person's perspective is invaluable on a board like that. And to be honest with you, I think we need to see more of it. So.
Um, also, I'd like to, while we're still on the air, to make a, a statement. This is the county commissioner's website. But we can't, as commissioners, we can't use this to promote or otherwise address campaign or political issues or questions, um, on the county website. Neither can we do that, uh, you know, for something that's paid for by other sources. So I can't, I can't use this to benefit my campaign one way or the other. And neither can Kathy or Brian. We can't answer questions that, uh, relate to what we do as commissioners. And when we are here as commissioners, we serve the entire community regardless of their political persuasion. And we can't use this environment to promote our campaign. So we'll have to, uh, avoid any questions that relate directly to our political opponents or otherwise.
We can address, if it's, if there's a question regarding a decision.
We can address, if it's, if there's a question regarding a decision that's been made, we can, we can address that, but I agree, agree with you.
The decisions we make affect everybody, not just one political party or the other.
Right.
And finally, on here, I believe this is in reference to the Children's Services and, and all that information. Betty Smith, sadly, addiction and mental health has played roles in this. What suggestions do you have that all agencies work more together?
Well, I think that's what we're, we're seeing, and of course, mental health, addiction, whether it be alcohol, drugs, other addictions, have played, definitely played into many of our Children's Services placements. The vast majority of the children that are in custody right now in Children's Services are as a result of drug addiction. That, that's a given fact. And because of that, it is, it, it, it's necessary for our agencies to work together. That's, that's really the premise behind what's happened with John Family Services and Children's Services. Not, in not all cases, but in some cases, the clients are the same. And there's, there's exposure to those children more than once, meaning those children are taken care of through John Family Services, but they're also provided care and, and assistance through Children's Services. So the more eyes you have on the situation, the better. I think, I, I think it's imperative that they work together from a funding standpoint as well. And again, just, there, there's a lot of inter-agency cooperation. Any public entity that has any eyes on children are automatic, they're, they're automatic reporting agencies, most of them. So if there's an issue, they have to report those issues. That happens all the time, all the time. And they literally, they have to work together, they communicate. Now, there is a certain amount of confidentiality. We've talked about that. It, it kind of drives you crazy, actually, the, the level of confidentiality, because there's laws that keep some agencies or some individuals from talking to each other about certain things. That is to protect the identity of the child and, or the situation that that child is in or has come out of. It's very tough. There are so many variables that come into play here. But Betty, Betty's question is right in the fact that it insinuates that there needs to be cross-agency cooperation. And I think that's something that's really being focused on right now. We, we've got to find ways to be more efficient and ways to communicate and ways to, to make sure that those barriers are not in place. I think, I, I, I do believe that there's, there's changes that are occurring now, and there's changes that will occur in the future that'll facilitate a lot better communication. The Special Victims Unit, the, the fact that, you know, Prosecutor Timon is, is putting together that team, and that touches every law enforcement agency in Souda County. There's liaisons on those agencies. That means all those eyes are going to be working together in tandem to make sure that if there's someone that is a victim, and, or there's someone perpetrating violence upon children or elderly people or whoever it might be, that those are being addressed. And I'm very encouraged by what I'm hearing between the different organizations. Things are, things are definitely happening positively.
For example, one of the first things Jason Mantow did was in, when they're investigating the foster parents, he's now working with the Village in Boston Police Department, the city, and our Sheriff Department, as well as the agency that does the initial investigation. So, and then, and then John Family Services, their role, working with the Children's Services. It's, like you said, Waco, it's invaluable, it's made, with them working together, they've conquered a lot of things that they couldn't have done alone. And so it, it's starting, and, and I think that everyone sees the need to work together, and I think we're moving forward.
Yes. I hope that answers the question. Anything else?
All right. Motion?
So moved.
To adjourn.
A little second.
Mr. Crabtree? Ms. Coleman?
Did you, Mr. Crabtree?
I made the motion, okay.
Okay, a second.
Need a vote.
Okay, aye.
Ms. Coleman?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye. Thank you, everyone. That may be a record, that's a long one.
We'll be right in time to go to our next meeting.
Yeah, we have time to go.